It is 6:30 PM. We will call the Stevens Point area Public School District Board regular school board meeting for Monday, May 9, 2016 to order. And Sue, could you do the roll call and verification of quorum?
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Here. Ms. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Erler?
Here.
Mr. Kantos?
Here.
Mr. Levin?
Here.
Ms. Portson?
Here.
Ms. Rannow?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
We have a quorum, nine present.
All present and accounted for. All right, we are moving into item three, which is the approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion to? That's Jeff Ebel.
Second.
Second, Judy Rannow. Any discussion or changes or questions? Sue, could you call the board first?
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kantos?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rannow?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Moving on to item four, which is the pledge of allegiance. And we are very proud tonight to be able to say that we actually have two schools representatives who are going to be here this evening. I apologize if I mispronounce any names. I'm going to do my best. But we have Plover Whiting students Katana Pavost, Lucas Radke, Rachel Jorgensen, Chloe Kindler, Akira Vang, and De La Vang. And our Jefferson students are Susanna Johnson, Christopher Campbell, William Frye, Tegan Rodriguez, Sophia Durkey, Emma Schalz Hocky, Kaylee Lehman, Lillian Chang, Kamira Wojtalowicz, Abigail Walsh, and Zoe Fink. So if we could have everybody come on in and help us with the pledge, that would be wonderful.
You kids. We have everybody in? Okay, you guys go ahead and start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand right there. We have some certificates to give to you for helping us out tonight. Then we're going to get a nice picture of all of you.
Okay, we're all mixed up because we had to do it by size, so I'm going to call out your name and you can just tell me who you are. So Katana.
She's not here.
She's not here. Wouldn't you know this place one. Lucas. Okay, good. Thank you for coming. Rachel?
Not here.
Not here. Chloe?
Right here.
I see where this is going. Akira?
Not here.
Dala?
Not here.
That might be it, because we're back to Katana. Okay. Zoe Fink?
I'm not here.
Thank you, Zoe. Abigail?
Here.
Kamira?
Here.
Pretty neat. Lillian?
Here.
Thank you, Lily.
Kaylee?
Yes.
Thank you, Kaylee. Emma?
Right here.
Thank you, Emma. Sophia? Sophia? Tegan? Way to say it. Tegan? Okay. And Lillian? Christopher? It's Susanna. So I have Christopher. No Christopher? Okay. Thank you so much. You know what? If you guys, let's get a picture of y'all, okay? We'll get a picture.
Yeah, we'll do kids.
Yeah.
It helps if I turn the camera on.
Turn it on.
Sorry, kiddo.
Now, you know what? All these people would like to shake their hands, so if you could just follow me.
How about parents?
Yeah, they have parents? Sure, okay. Any parents here? Good. Raise your hands, folks. There we go.
Thank you very much for allowing the kids to come, especially on a beautiful night like this, to help us out.
Okay, follow me. Come on around. Start right there. Shake your hands. Okay. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Thank you so much. You guys did an awesome job. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you. You guys are awesome. You did a great job. Thank you. Good job. Good makeup. Hi. Thank you, child. Thank you. You did a great job. So nice. You. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Good job.
So we are moving into item Community Partnership and Recognition, 5A, Student and Staff Recognition. One, Alexa Kirchewski from Kennedy Elementary is presenting Susan Plisca, Educational Assistant, the Mandana Bliss Award.
We have been, we might have mislied you a little bit to get you here.
I came here for student council. That's what I thought, anyway.
My name is Alexa Kirchewski, and I admire Mrs. Plisca. I admire Mrs. Plisca because she is helpful, kind, responsible, and respectful. Mrs. Plisca taught me to stand up for others. Mrs. Plisca has been one of the student council advisors for about 10 years. Each year, a new challenge comes her way. But that doesn't stop Mrs. Plisca, because she will always go above and beyond for any student or staff member. When our computer lab needed new tables and there was no support, Mrs. Plisca was the first one to speak up and help raise and find funds to purchase new tables. Mrs. Plisca is a very hard worker. She supports her family by working full-time, working during the summers cleaning our school, and taking care of her husband, who faces the many challenges of MS. She helps out the community by volunteering at the Junction City Cancer Walk. She helps out with the Bat Pack program at Kennedy School, which sends a bat pack full of food for families over a weekend who do not have the daily breakfasts and lunches for their kids, which is provided by the school breakfast and lunch program. Many students look up to Mrs. Plisca. Mrs. Plisca is always there for any student. She will always greet you with a smile, and if you're feeling sad, she'll ask you what's wrong. She will spend her lunch just to help a student. Mrs. Plisca has been working at Kennedy for many years. Currently, she has been our library assistant. She's amazing and always willing to help a student. Find a book? She will make suggestions on books that may fit a student. If you lose a book, Mrs. Plisca will do anything in her power to help you find that book. Don't worry about hearing the word "no" from Mrs. Plisca, because she will always find a way. She has one of the most kindest hearts, and she's always willing to help. These many qualities are the reason why I nominated Mrs. Plisca for the 2016 Mandana Bliss Award. Congratulations to Mrs. Plisca for being the 2016 Kennedy School Bandana Bliss Award winner.
And no, I don't know what to say. But thank you very much. There's more. Oh. Thank you. Oh, my goodness. Want to get a picture? You want to come up here and get a picture? Congratulations. Thank you. I'm excited. You did an awesome job. Very, very good job. And you chose a wonderful woman. Thank you so much. You chose. Thank you. Item 5A2, Carlin Phillips from Kennedy Elementary is being recognized as one of
the top five cadet patrolers in the state.
Do you want to read through this one? I don't know if it's good reading that one. Right there? Yeah, I know. Yeah. Well, if she's going to keep. Hi, my name is Carlin Phillips. I am a sixth grader at Kennedy Elementary, and I'm going to tell you a little bit about my trip. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you today. AAA Wisconsin and School Safety Patrols Incorporated recognizes a patroler of the Year each year in Wisconsin. Judges review and score nominees based on what the advisors wrote about the student and the student's essay. I was nominated by Ms. Bach, my cadet advisor. She wrote amazing things about my leadership qualities, safety skills, and so much more. I am thankful for her as our advisor and forever grateful for her nominating me. We left Madison on a Wednesday morning. The scariest part of going on the trip for me was knowing that I would be far away from home by myself. Luckily, we had amazing chaperones, which included teachers, a firefighter, EMT, a police officer, and a nurse. I met a lot of people and made new friends. This is a picture of all of the winners. We went to a lot of places in and out of DC. First, we went to Gettysburg and Mount Vernon. We did not get a full tour of the battlefields of Gettysburg because it rained. We also went to the Pentagon City Mall, National Mall, Pentagon Memorial, and Arlington National Cemetery. Here's a picture of the memorial bench of the youngest person onboard the plane that was hijacked and flown into the Pentagon. She was three years old. We also got to see the changing of the guards at Arlington National Cemetery. This is a view of the back of the White House from the top of the Washington Monument. It was an amazing view. Here are pictures of the Jefferson Memorial, the top of the dome at the Capitol, and Ford's Theater. This is the spot in Ford's Theater where President Abraham Lincoln was shot. He died the next day at Peterson House. I learned a lot of different things. I learned that George Washington was supposed to be buried at Arlington, but instead was buried at Mount Vernon, his home. My favorite thing was going to the top of the Washington Monument. When Ms. Bach told me that I won this trip, she said, "This is big," over and over again. She was right. I'm proud to be a Kennedy Cougar and that I got to represent our district on this memorable trip. Thank you for your time.
And she even knows how to operate all the technical stuff, too. That was fantastic. Can you meet the board here? Going to take a picture? Congratulations. Good. Nice. Congratulations on the award. Congratulations. So glad you got to go. So excited. I love Washington. I felt the same way. Congratulations. She was the first ever from our district. Yes, this was the first winner ever from our district. So that was pretty. That's why Ms. Bach said, "This is big." The rain and the snow, the safety patrolers are out there. Freezing weather, icicles hanging from their hair.
Oh, yeah. So we are on item 5A, or 5A3, which is Earth Day posters. Ben Franklin, Kenzie Swinford took first place, Rebecca Glazer second, and Gigi Deekelman third place.
Are any of them here tonight? Oh, good, they're here. Fantastic. Okay. Let's get a picture. Okay? Stand right out here so the folks at home can see it. I like you talking. Mommy's so good. Come on around. Congratulations. Congratulations, nice job. Nice job, you guys. Just for the folks at home, Ben Franklin had an Earth Day project, and he had wonderful posters in their hallways that the art students do over there. So it was a tough choice. I got to judge him along with several other people, and they were just amazing. You know, I should ask you, which posters were yours?
Mine was the one with the big wall with the earth coming out of it.
Okay.
Mine was the one that had a big eye on it, and it said, it was like in the middle, there was like a scene, a nature scene.
Okay, great. They were beautiful. Too bad we couldn't have gotten here tonight. We should have done that. Oh, well. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item. Moving on to item 5A4, recognition that the Plover Whiting staff donated $800 to help meet the reconstruction costs for a Plover Whiting family who had a fire. And item 5A5 is the Spash Math Department, Denise Ettrheim. Spash placed first in the large school division. Spash placed first overall, over all the school sizes. Spash had four top-three award winners in their respective categories. Sarah Kim, Max Hofmeister, Thomas Velt, and Joselyn He. Spash had two first-place winners in their respective categories, Sarah Kim and Max Hofmeister. Spash had eight of our 12 team members placed in the top five in their respective categories. And Spash's Ashley Peeper won the Central Wisconsin Math League Scholarship for her Years of Excellence in Math League throughout her high school years. So congratulations to Spash and the math department. That's very impressive. Moving on to item 5A6, which is the WASC Leadership Positions. Elected to represent Region Two, which is north-central Wisconsin, Senior High School Dale Steinmetz, Vice President, Lexi Ford, Secretary. In junior high and middle school, Joe Daniels, President, Ethan Kolinsky, Vice President, and Gabby Held, Secretary. And hot off the press, this item 5A7 is Spash Forensics. Spash Forensics Team recently completed their season at the state meet at UW-Madison. All 13 participants earned medals. Joselyn He was a top performer, earning a perfect score and gold medal in poetry reading. Madison Eggers, Reed Larson, and James Guit earned silver medals in extemporaneous speech. Olivia Shilker earned a silver medal in poetry reading. Caitlin Placence earned a silver in prose reading. Emily Check, Sidney Clark, J.C. Court, Hannah Clark, Allison Wazinski, Emma Jor, and Kate Young all earned bronze medals. Congratulations to all the members of this year's forensics team. That is, again, another incredible, nice math forensics. Too bad we're moving to the end of the year. It would be, we'll have to carry this momentum into the next school year. So, and then we also, I'm going to have Dr. Bush talk about some wonderful faculty awards that we've seen in the last period of time.
This is a wonderful time of year where everybody gets to recognize all the great things done by our teachers and our district staff and all the kids. The UW-Stevens Point Association for the Education of Young Children Award for Excellence in Teaching went to Jackie Beversdorf of Washington Elementary. The Capital Delta Pi Epsilon Chapter Award for Excellence in Teaching, Ione Hostler, Agriculture Secondary. UWSP Student Council for Exceptional Children Award for Excellence in Teaching, Heidi Leahy from Kennedy. UWSP Student Wisconsin Education Association Award for Excellence in Teaching, Stacy Jansen from Jefferson. So congratulations to all those teachers. And a lot of these came in late, so apologize to the board because we didn't get the revisions to you, because we just found out about some of these. We also have a proclamation. It was actually May 2 through 6 was School Nutrition Employee Week, and I know Lori Epstein, our school food service director, is out there. And I want, so I wanted to recognize the over, overall, in the state, 500,000 Wisconsin schoolchildren eat every day, which is an amazing statistic. And we want to appreciate all of the food service workers at all of our schools that help provide nutritious meals for kids. So we have a proclamation basically from Tony Evers, the school superintendent of the State of Wisconsin, basically saying that meals prepared and served by school nutrition employees may significantly enhance the student learning environments. And we don't think about that a lot. We just think, well, these kids are eating. But without a good, healthy meal and good nutrition, they can't concentrate like they should. So thank you again, Lori, to all of your staff. We have some donations.
Oh, first, I'm going to recognize, although he's going to be on the spot embarrassed, but one of our colleagues, Jeff Ebel, was just at the state convention/conference for Toastmasters, an organization he has been involved with for many years. And to his surprise and delight, he received the T Award, which is an award that the Toastmasters provides. It's a not-every-year award. It is only where merited. It recognizes special, unique, important, long-lasting contributions to the organization. It's not an award that has, you do A, B, C, D, and E, and you're going to achieve this award. It's you do what you do day by day to make an impact on this organization, and we're going to recognize that. And clearly, we're aware that's what Jeff does, because that's what he's been doing since he's been on the school board. So anyway, congratulations to you for that. Very impressive work. Okay, so moving on to 5B, which are donations.
So we have some wonderful donations. Well, we got a fireplace from Snow Belt Fireplace and Stove Shop to the Boston School for us to keep them all warm out there. I'll be thinking of you next winter when I'm in.
We'll be thinking of you, too.
Sitting by my pool. But you have a fireplace to keep you warm now, so that's good. Madison School received a donation of $500 for supplies and clothing from the Stevens Point Women's Club. MacDill Elementary received donations for their family bingo, candlelight hike, and scavenger hunt from the following. Central Wisconsin Children's Museum, Kohl's, McDonald's, Skip's Bowling, Taco Bell East, Olympic Restaurant, Pizza Hut, Plover, Cops Plover in Stevens Point, KFC Plover, Grazzi's Italian Grill, Arby's, Golden Corral, Jessica and Kurt Christensen, Rhonda Pavelski. Hmm, I know that name, Pavelski.
Yeah, Joe.
San Jose Sharks.
I know.
Go Sharks. Little Caesars, McDonald's North, Belts Officer, Team Cheryl, Hardee's North, Five Star Lanes, and Opus Barn Grill, Walgreens, Triggs, M.E.J.'s, El Mescal, Save-A-Lot, and Las Pen. Okay.
Las Penas.
Las Penas, Vita Bellia. Okay, so thank you all for donating to our kids here at these schools. That's fantastic.
Okay, we're moving on to the district showcase.
We have two things that we want to highlight tonight. The first one is the Buddy Bench, and we'd like the members of the Spash FCCLA, are they outside in the hallway, to come in and talk about their Buddy Bench. Caitlin Stanton, Cassie Dembski, and Lilly Farkas. So ladies, if you want to come on in, and you know, they might have something to set up here. We might have to pull this stuff back, Madam Chair. I think they have something that we need to, they're going to set up here. Come on up, girls. Oh, look, they have capes. Awesome.
Ah, you guys are awesome.
Put it up on here. We'll put it up on here. There you go.
Is that good?
Take it away.
Is this a place? I don't know. I don't know who's standing.
If you want to come around, maybe come around and speak in the microphone, that'd be great.
Okay. So hi, I'm Cassie. My name's Caitlin.
And my name is Lilly. We are all students at Spash, and we are part of a national organization called FCCLA. This program is all about leadership skills and community service projects. This year, we created a community service project to stop bullying by turning bystanders into upstanders in our community. The first part of our project is we want to create Safe Zone posters for every classroom door throughout our school district. This would cost a lot of money, so we wanted to apply for a mini grant. We were ecstatic when we found that we received the $350 that we had asked for. This made it possible for us to create five different posters to put on every classroom door throughout our district.
Our second mission for our project would be to present to all eighth graders in our district. So we went to Ben Franklin and PJ Jacobs, both first and second semester, and we gave them a presentation on what bullying is and how to prevent it by becoming upstanders. And they completed an interactive activity where they received a paper brick, and they wrote their promise on being an upstander. And that was put up on a wall, and it built a brick wall against bullying.
The expansion of our project was to reach out to the youth of our local community by creating a Buddy Bench for Plover Whiting Elementary School. The Buddy Bench's purpose is to eliminate loneliness and create friendship. And how they use the Buddy Bench is when a kid wants a friend to play with, they go and sit on the bench, and then another kid would see them and walk up to them and ask them to come play with them and their friends.
So on our poster over there, you can see the posters recreated, the bricks that the kids promised on what they can do to be an upstander. On the second frame, you can see the Buddy Bench that we made in their school colors. And so we competed our project at the regional and state level so far and received gold medals, which was really awesome. And so this summer, we are going to San Diego, California for Nationals to compete our project as well. And our mission for our project is to have everyone put on their cape. So we made capes to remind people to be a superhero and become upstanders in their day-to-day life, and just stand up for others and promote positivity.
Come up here and stay facing me so that the people in the TV land can see your capes, because I think that's just fantastic. So there you go. Captain Marvel, have nothing on these ladies, so thank you, Dr. Chen, round and get a picture. We got a picture of these fine ladies. What a great thing we've done.
Could you call me later?
Thank you.
Yeah, she's here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are awesome. So here's a donation, and we want to hear about your fundraisers that you're going to have for your trip to San Diego, because we're really excited about it, and we really want to help with that, okay? Thank you. We are so proud of you. You guys are awesome. Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Good luck in San Diego.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for being a buddy.
Yes, we have more good stuff, too. Just keeps on coming. So the next thing we have is Jerry Garglak is going to talk about a project, and it's one of the projects was Cuts for Kids, so he's brought in some folks with him. And if you want to head over to the podium area, I don't know, geez, we got a whole bunch. I didn't really know how many were coming.
Fine, that's great.
Yeah, come on in, yeah. Go on over there, and somebody can tell us about your projects. There's even, are there more coming up, too, from the audience? They're coming everywhere. Awesome. Fantastic. The more the merrier. This makes for great TV. And is there a spokesperson? There is a spokesperson.
Hi, I'm Heidi Sheple O'Brien. I'm a parent of a ninth grader at PJ Jacobs. And this year, I served on the DPI's Parent Advisory Committee, a statewide committee that appoints 10 parents to come together four or five times a year in person, and then also do work outside of those meetings on a designated strategy to improve our schools. In the last two years, that strategy has been increasing family and community engagement with the schools. And so the focus has been very strong on helping families become more engaged with their schools, making schools more of a community center, so that a family is comfortable coming in their school and doesn't engage with their school the first time when something's not going right. They come into the school, and they are comfortable being there as part of their local community. So of those engagement strategies, a couple of the things DPI has really prioritized are, includes things like having a welcoming environment in your school, hooking your families up to other services they might need outside the school, recognizing families even more than what the school is able to provide, and making sure that they feel comfortable asking for those resources, letting the school know they need those things. And the really cool thing that we have done this year, that Jerry Garglak, our school psych, has done this year, is put together this program called Cuts for Kids. All these individuals here and more have participated in that program. Jerry's going to tell you a little more about that program. But I want to let you know that Mr. Evers was really excited to hear about Cuts for Kids, and excited that it was happening here in Stevens Point. It's not a program that he was familiar with that's happening anywhere else in the state, so another thing that our district is doing that nobody else is doing to really help our families in need. That, and the mental health piece.
We have some donations.
Oh, first, I'm going to recognize, although he's going to be on the spot embarrassed, but one of our colleagues, Jeff Ebel, was just at the state convention/conference for Toastmasters, an organization he has been involved with for many years. And to his surprise and delight, he received the T Award, which is an award that the Toastmasters provides. It's a not-every-year award. It is only where merited. It recognizes special, unique, important, long-lasting contributions to the organization. It's not an award that has, you do A, B, C, D, and E, and you're going to achieve this award. It's, you do what you do day by day to make an impact on this organization, and we're going to recognize that. And clearly, we're aware that's what Jeff does, because that's what he's been doing since he's been on the school board. So, anyway, congratulations to you for that. Very impressive work. Okay, so moving on to 5B, which are donations.
So, we have some wonderful donations. Well, we got a fireplace from Snow Belt Fireplace and Stove Shop to the Boston School for us to keep them all warm out there. I'll be thinking of you next winter when I'm in.
We'll be thinking of you, too.
Sitting by my pool. But you have a fireplace to keep you warm now, so that's good. Madison School received a donation of $500 for supplies and clothing from the Stevens Point Women's Club. MacDill Elementary received donations for their family bingo, candlelight hike, and scavenger hunt from the following: Central Wisconsin Children's Museum, Kohl's, McDonald's, Skip's Bowling, Taco Bell East, Olympic Restaurant, Pizza Hut, Plover, Cops Plover in Stevens Point, KFC Plover, Grazzi's Italian Grill, Arby's, Golden Corral, Jessica and Kurt Christensen, Rhonda Pavelski. Hmm, I know that name, Pavelski.
Yeah, Joe.
San Jose Sharks. Go Sharks. Little Caesar's, McDonald's North, Belts Officer, Team Cheryl, Hardee's North, Five Star Lanes, and Opus Barn Grill, Walgreens, Triggs, M.E.J.'s, El Mescal, Save-A-Lot, and La Sp... Okay.
La Sparta.
La Sparta, Vitabella. Okay, so thank you all for donating to our kids here at these schools. That's fantastic.
Okay, we're moving on to the district showcase.
We have two things that we want to highlight tonight. The first one is the Buddy Bench, and we'd like the members of the SPASH FCCLA, are they outside in the hallway, to come in and talk about their Buddy Bench. Kaitlyn Stanton, Cassie Dembski, and Lilly Farkas. So ladies, if you want to come on in, and you know, they might have something to set up here. We might have to pull this stuff back, Madam Chair. I think they have something that we need to... They're going to set up here. Come on up, girls. Oh, look, they have capes. Awesome.
Ah, you guys are awesome.
You want to put it up on here? Will it fit up on here? There you go.
Is that good?
Take it away.
Is this a place? I don't know. I don't understand.
If you want to come around, maybe come around and speak in the microphone. That'd be great.
Okay. So, hi, I'm Cassie. My name's Kaitlyn.
And my name is Lilly. We are all students at SPASH, and we are part of a national organization called FCCLA. This program is all about leadership skills and community service projects. This year, we created a community service project to stop bullying by turning bystanders into upstanders in our community. The first part of our project is we wanted to create Safe Zone posters for every classroom door throughout our school district. This would cost a lot of money, so we wanted to apply for a mini grant. We were ecstatic when we found that we received the $350 that we had asked for. This made it possible for us to create five different posters to put on every classroom door throughout our district.
Our second mission for our project would be to present to all eighth graders in our district. So, we went to Ben Franklin and PJ Jacobs, both first and second semester, and we gave them a presentation on what bullying is and how to prevent it by becoming upstanders. And they completed an interactive activity where they received a paper brick, and they wrote their promise on being an upstander. And that was put up on a wall, and it built a brick wall against bullying.
The expansion of our project was to reach out to the youth of our local community by creating a Buddy Bench for Plover Whitey Elementary School. The Buddy Bench's purpose is to eliminate loneliness and create friendship. And how they use the Buddy Bench is when a kid wants a friend to play with, they go and sit on the bench, and then another kid would see them and walk up to them and ask them to come play with them and their friends.
So, on our poster over there, you can see the posters recreated, the bricks that the kids promised on what they can do to be an upstander. On the second frame, you can see the Buddy Bench that we made in their school colors. And so, we competed our project at the regional and state level so far and received gold medals, which was really awesome. And so, this summer, we are going to San Diego, California for Nationals to compete our project as well. And our mission for our project is to have everyone put on their cape. So, we make capes to remind people to be a superhero and become upstanders in their day-to-day life, and just stand up for others and promote positivity.
Come up here and stay facing me so that the people in the TV land can see your capes, because I think that's just fantastic. So, there you go. Captain Marvel, have nothing on these ladies, so thank you, Doctor. Turn around and get a picture. We've got a picture of these fine ladies. What a great thing they've done.
Thank you. So, here's a donation, and we want to hear about your fundraisers that you're going to have for your trip to San Diego, because we're really excited about it, and we really want to help with that, okay? Thank you. We are so proud of you. You guys are awesome. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Jeff, and good luck. Good luck in San Diego.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for being a buddy. Yes, we have more good stuff, too. Just keeps on coming. So, the next thing we have is Jerry Gargelak is going to talk about a project, and it's one of the projects was Cuts for Kids, so he's brought in some folks with him. And if you want to head over to the podium area, I don't know, geez, we got a whole bunch. I didn't really know how many were coming.
Fine, that's great.
Yeah, come on in, yeah. Go on over there, and somebody can tell us about your projects. Are there even more coming up, too, from the audience? They're coming everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
Awesome. Fantastic. The more, the merrier. This makes for great TV. And is there a spokesperson? There is a spokesperson.
Hi, I'm Heidi Shepple O'Brien. I'm a parent of a ninth grader at PJ Jacobs, and this year, I served on the DPI's Parent Advisory Committee, a statewide committee that appoints 10 parents to come together four or five times a year in person, and then also do work outside of those meetings on a designated strategy to improve our schools. In the last two years, that strategy has been increasing family and community engagement with the schools. And so, the focus has been very strong on helping families become more engaged with their schools, making schools more of a community center, so that a family is comfortable coming in their school and doesn't engage with their school the first time when something's not going right. They come into the school, and they are comfortable being there as part of their local community. So, of those engagement strategies, a couple of the things DPI has really prioritized are includes things like having a welcoming environment in your school, hooking your families up to other services they might need outside the school, recognizing families even more than what the school is able to provide, and making sure that they feel comfortable asking for those resources, letting the school know they need those things. And the really cool thing that we have done this year, that Jerry Gargelak, our school psych, has done this year, is put together this program called Cuts for Kids. All these individuals here and more have participated in that program. Jerry's going to tell you a little more about that program, but I want to let you know that Mr. Evers was really excited to hear about Cuts for Kids, and excited that it was happening here in Stevens Point. It's not a program that he was familiar with that's happening anywhere else in the state. So, another thing that our district is doing that nobody else is doing to really help our families in need. That, and the mental health piece that we're doing more of in our district, including Jerry Gargelak being available to help students and families in crisis and hooking them up with all the community services, that is a new initiative this year as well with DPI. And our district is already employing someone doing that. So, yeah, I was really excited to be a parent and to be at that meeting, and to be able to talk about these things that aren't happening in other parts of the state. And for DPI, for Mr. Evers and his staff that were there with us at every meeting, to hear about these really positive things that we're doing in our community for our families and students that are in need. And so, we wanted to let you know that today, and I commend you for the support that you've given to those programs, and would ask you to continue to support family engagement and mental health programs in our district. And now, Jerry's going to tell you a little more about Cuts for Kids.
Thanks for having us, folks. And it's really, this is really a community effort. I appreciate the comments, Heidi, but really, the reason I asked all these people to come, and there's people missing, is this is really a community initiative. We can't do this without others. And all I want to do is stress what we're trying to do is, again, make the schools a center of our community. So, the schools that have done it so far are basically coming up with a theme. The theme has been reading in each of the schools so far with some summer school. And then, in some cases, we have meals, we have services that are, some of the people are here, they're able to be there to answer questions relative to their corporations and whatnot. And then, the people who can't be there still are a part, and then we have brochures, pamphlets, whatnot, so people can ask questions about those services. Many people in our community don't know these agencies, they don't know the services, they don't know how to negotiate those services, so that's really what we're trying to do. So, with that being said, I just want to go through the list of people so you really have a grasp of how many individuals have been involved. Jessica Champion at Bannock, Wendy Fletcher, CAP Services, if you could raise your hand if you're here, the Bannock staff, Innovative Services, Heidi O'Brien, who's on the State Superintendent Parent Advisory, April Rose Nicky, McKinley PTO, Tiffany Krieger, Evergreen Initiatives, McKinley PTO, McKinley Staff, Amanda Mayo McKinley, Molly Demerow Jefferson, Jefferson Staff, Monica Lockett, hairstylist, The Difference, which is one of the stylists in town, Renee Larson McKinley, The Difference, I said them, Terry Aldridge McKinley, Midstate Technical College, School of Cosmetology, Amy Anderson, NRG Media, in here, okay, Media, Clover Schmidt Kennedy, Joe Soibert YMCA, Michael Prince YMCA, sorry, the YMCA, Clearly Allure Hair Care, The Barber Shop, United Way, Boys and Girls Club, Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Porridge County Housing Authority, Stevens Point Housing Authority, Terry Pinter McKinley and Evergreen Initiatives, Kids Closet, and I'm sure there's a few I've missed, and I apologize. But again, we need to get these services out to our community, and that's the point of this initiative. So, thank you.
Jerry, could you just tell briefly what the cuts really are? I mean, are providing haircuts? I mean, what?
Yeah, we're actually providing, again, the whole idea is to put our schools on the map, and that's why we have an initiative that the schools, each school will decide, when I go and talk to them, they decide on how they want to handle it, and then the meal and whatnot. But the actual cuts, our haircuts that we provide for families, children, parents, whoever wants a haircut, the stylists are providing that free of charge. Some people can't afford a $15, $20 haircut, so especially when you have a family of five or whatnot. Some people can, but whoever wants to get a cut, they get a cut, so that's the service we provide that evening, besides an educational piece.
Yes.
And service piece, so thanks for asking.
So, we attended Cuts for Kids because it was at McKinley, and my daughter goes to McKinley. She came home from school, and she was so excited. If I had said, "No, we can't go, we have something else," she would have been heartbroken. So, congratulations. Thank you so much to the staff for getting the word out and getting the kids excited. They brought, they bring that information home, and parents see that excitement and want to help with that. Plus, she got a book out of it, which, for my daughter, is the best gift in the world. We had a great time, and it was a wonderful event.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you do.
Appreciate it.
It's in your free time, and it's a love of your heart and a dedication to the community, and we appreciate all of your work.
Just make one other comment. And I want you to know that after my last educational services meeting, Dr. Bush mentioned something about, you know, we could really use some help from Madison. So, I did meet with Katrina Shanklin and talked about, you know, gave her a lot of the information from that meeting, and said, "You know, we're planting a seed, because this is our community, and that mental health issue is in our schools." And so, these, you know, we're your people. And so, I want you to know that there are things we may need to ask you for, and I want you to be aware of them and look at them for us. So, we are, I think, as a board, being very proactive and understanding that what you do is not only the ABCs in school, but really supporting our community, our families and that, and it's very, very appreciative. And these are our kids, you know, so thank you. Totally appreciate it for what you do.
Thanks to Jerry, by the way, for doing all of that.
And Jerry.
It's these folks, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
So, we are on item six, which is public comments, and we have two individuals who have signed up to speak. And the first is Heidi Shepple O'Brien. And I'm not sure if she was thinking that that's what she was going to be speaking about. Could you check with her, Dave? That was, okay, all right. The second individual is Julie Lavick. You want to come up?
Hello, thank you for allowing me to talk for just a few minutes. I come here speaking as a parent, as well as an educator in this district. I teach fifth grade at Bannock Elementary. I have three children in this district, all of whom are very fortunate not to have any learning issues and are, I would brag and say, very bright children, one of which who is a student who attends Point of Discovery School. And I'm here to talk on behalf of the experience that he's having there and to thank you for the support of that school. I apologize, I'm going to start to cry, always do when I talk about my kids. Noah is a very unique student who is very bright and has been gifted athletically, but never sees the strength in himself. And he has teachers who have always seen the leadership abilities in him, which he has never seen himself, which has been a struggle. And when I learned about Point of Discovery and the form of learning, it was, wow, that is perfect for my son. He loves to learn about things in depth, not on the surface, gets excited and wants to run with it, which isn't always available in the traditional setting. And when I took him to a meeting to learn about this school, he was fatigued big time, and it was 10:30. When he came into the bathroom, he said, "Mom, did you sign me up yet?" And he's been there, then, of course, this first year, and he is a sixth grader, and the experience there has been phenomenal for him. He has been allowed to build the leadership skills that are within him, but not forced upon him to try and show to the other students. And he has learned things that I didn't expect him to be able to learn so quickly. He is a perfectionist, and being as bright as he is, he, when something becomes difficult, he could often shut down. And one of the six traits that they're trying to instill in the children at that school was grit, and that was one of the main reasons why we sent him there, because we knew that having grit and perseverance would be the one skill that would allow him to really succeed as an adult. And he, in his main first conference, he could see that in himself, that that was an area that he struggled with. And as the year has moved on, he has learned to persevere through struggles where if learning has always come easy for him, but being in an expeditionary learning model and project-based learning has allowed him to really problem-solve through items that have been difficult for him, things that he wouldn't have been able to experience as a student in a traditional setting. And at his last conference, the one thing he learned was the grit award, which is, may seem, was probably my proudest moment with him, because he's learning that skill in that learning environment, and he's being able to apply it in his education, or his activities outside of the educational setting, which is, to me, the biggest thing that he can get from that experience. And so, I want to thank you for your support in supporting that school, because I've not seen my child as invested in his learning as I've seen him at that school this year. And he's been in the, he's been in the public system and the Catholic school system, and I feel fortunate that we do live in a community that has more than one system for us to choose for our children based on the needs that they have, and his particular needs are being met at that school. So, I want to thank you very much for support of Point of Discovery. Apologize for my tearing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your grit in coming up and talking to the...
It's much easier to joke and talk in front of fifth graders than it is.
Pretty intimidating. This group is an intimidating group.
I like fifth grade.
I've just now learned to relax after eight meetings.
Thank you. Is there anyone out there this evening from the public who was not able to sign up on the list but would like to address the board? No one else is present. So, we will move on to item 7A, which is Student Representative Report. Haley Schraff-Nigle.
All right. So, last Monday night was the SPASH Academics Awards, and the auditorium at SPASH, and students earning a GPA of 3.8 or higher received recognition. Last night was the National Honor Society banquet. Seniors received their cords for graduation, and new juniors and seniors were inducted to the NHS. Tonight is the SPASH Athletic Awards as we speak. The final three concerts of the year are orchestra, choir, and band. Orchestra will be on Thursday, May 12th at 7:30, choir on Thursday, May 19th at 7:30, and band on Wednesday, May 25th at 7:30. The cultural festival was last weekend at SPASH. AP testing is in its second week and will conclude this Friday. Over 300 students are taking AP exams to earn advanced college credit. The last day of school for seniors will be Thursday, May 26th, and graduation practice is on Friday, May 27th, and our graduation ceremony is on Sunday, May 29th at 2:00 p.m. at SPASH. And that's all.
May 28th, I think.
That's a lot.
I think it's May 28th. Is that the Sunday? No? Is it 29th?
Sunday.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item B, which is Wisconsin Association of School Boards, the WASB Legislative Update. And typically, we'll be looking to Dan Kontos, who's Chair of Policy and Legislative, to bring forward any information. We didn't have a committee meeting this week, but is there anything you'd like to report on tonight, Dan?
No, not at this time. We're getting my feet underneath me, and we didn't have a sufficient agenda to be able to pick up with that. But I do urge my fellow board members that if there's something in particular that you would like us to look at, we're going to start structuring, trying to review the policies as we move forward, and any of the legislative initiatives that they are aware of. Well, certainly, we'll bring you up to date, but if there's something in particular, please let us know.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to item 7C, which is the Communication Report. Sarah O'Donnell.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to come up here and talk to you a little bit about communications. Meg and Chris had asked me to start putting together a monthly report, and instead of writing a memo, as much as I like to write, I thought it'd be a little bit more fun and helpful to do a dashboard, kind of highlighting those communication pieces. So, if there's something on there that you'd like to see that you're not seeing, let me know. It's something we can certainly work through moving forward. So, just wanted to draw your attention to some things that are coming up in May, as everyone is doing this evening. We're currently wrapping up our summer school marketing efforts, so summer school registration will stop online on Friday, and then we kind of go into a closed window so they can prepare staffing and busing and all that fun stuff, and then reopen. So, if there are individuals who need to register for summer school, that happens here at Bliss after that in about two weeks. Our new transportation routing system means changes for parents as to how they will be notified of busing. That will all move online primarily between both the e-link on our website and then also our, the My Stop app, which will be, have some really nice features for parents. So, we'll start to communicate that to parents beginning this month so that it's not a huge surprise. We know that certainly change is something that we want to make sure we communicate as many times as possible. This week, we will conduct our, or begin conducting, our parent and staff surveys, something we do every, well, for the last four years, to go ahead and give the board really primarily an opportunity to see what that culture and climate is within the schools, both from staff and from parents. And then, it also provides really good information back to folks internally that are doing planning as we're looking to 16, 17, and beyond. Open benefits window is coming up soon for staff. Clearly, we'll be introducing our incoming superintendent here, kind of gradually as we move a little bit closer to June. Sorry, Dr. Bush. And graduation ceremonies abound this month, so I highly encourage you to attend those that you can. They are really what we do here and what it's all about, so taking part in those as much as possible. Then, other stuff I included for you was just kind of a look at our content mix, so how we are communicating. And then, I also take a look at some metrics that I'm looking at every month, our traditional media exposure. So, that graph just shows you kind of every time that that little line blips is a time that an article ran. So, when you see it run really high, that's the same article that got picked up kind of over and over again. And then, I tried to pull out those high ones for you so you could see what they were and then how many people they were exposed to. So, that's 52,000 people saw that piece on career advising from, which featured some of our SPASH staff. And then, we do see elementary clearly, right? We need to do a little bit better job there. We had no, nothing kind of highlighting elementary last month. And then, the back sheet just runs you through that new media exposure is something that we're certainly tracking, taking a look at what that, what our Facebook engagement is, what our Twitter engagement is, and then we're starting to dip our toe a little bit more than just board meetings into YouTube, so taking a look at, you know, if that's a place that we want to develop that video strategy and take a little bit closer look at putting some content out through there. Thank you for your time.
Are we, can we ask questions or make comments? I was really happy to see this. This was really cool.
Thanks.
And I loved the numbers. I thought it was really interesting that the numbers peaked for landing page site views in August and September, but I guess that makes sense.
Total sense, yep, yep.
But I had one, two suggestions.
Please.
If you could make these live links.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Because I found myself like trying to...
Trying to get to them, yes.
I wanted to see if I, the web, the Facebook page and the Twitter page that I always go to, is that the same one that you're talking about here? And I just wanted to connect, and I wasn't able to because they're not live.
Yeah, I would be happy to do that. And I should mention, too, those metrics are just for the district's official page. So, we have multiple people doing social media, and I have not found a good way other than not sleeping and drinking copious amounts of coffee to aggregate that. So, I, those are just metrics for district page.
Like, we're working together here, because my next comment was, I want it, I want a list of all of the Twitter...
Absolutely.
Facebook pages, because I know there's so many of them. And for example, if I had a child at Bannock, I might want to look at the Bannock page, and if Bannock has a Twitter page or a Twitter site, boy, I'd love to know about that, too. And I know that there are very, I know there are many, many, many Twitter feeds, and I'd love to see a list of those.
Yeah, there's a lot of people doing really good things on behalf of the district.
Yeah, it's great. This is, in this day and age, when we are having to, and that is addressed farther into our agenda for this evening, when it comes to students leaving our district, this is a wonderful way to combat that by telling students and telling families and potential families that may be considering moving to our community that these are all the cool things we're doing. So, this is great. I was really happy to see this.
Just a quick question. Last week, the last week of summer school enrollment, is there a push at all to let people know that this is a...
We did a push last week. Families received an email, and we did some social media blast. To be honest, at this point in the game, stuff is pretty well-felled. Yeah, we do, we do a really heavy push on the front end, and then we do some, some middle marketing in there, but really... marketing in there, but really, summer school registration starts the week after spring break.
Right.
And, and we've done that for a number of years now in an effort to kind of get parents used to, you know, this is when we register for summer school. And we see, continue to see numbers go up for those programs.
Yeah, I know they are.
There's some really fantastic programs.
Well, we have an amazing summer school program.
Yes, we do.
Thanks.
So, so the plan will be to have this as a regular item on the agenda. Clearly, seven out of 10, well, really 10 out of 10 of the goals and objectives we set for Dr. Bush this year were related to communications, some, some direct communications. And so, and we're also going to put it back to back with the policy WASB Legislative because we think there's going to be some synergy between those two positions with respect to what's happening, communications going to and from the legislature, our representatives, et cetera. So if people have any suggestions of how, you know, or want to see, as Sarah said...
Absolutely.
Something different or different ways, or she can come in and do certain PowerPoints about things she's doing, you know, as we move into the year. So.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Okay, we are moving into item D, which is, 7D, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Bush?
Thank you. So I'm going to give you a whole list of dates here too, and for people that are out there in the audience in television land, here, here's some things that have happened. You know, this is a great month for, again, recognition of, of our staffs and, and teachers. Here's some of what has occurred already. On May 3rd, the Portage County Business Council held their Excellence in Education Awards, recognizing a lot of our teachers who, who are nominated by their students for being an outstanding educator. And that's very meaningful when you get nominated by your student. So that was a nice evening. Of course, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week and, and it was celebrated in a number of different ways at all the schools, which was just a small token of thanks for the dedication that our, our teachers give to the students every day. On May 12th, Mid-State Technical College has their commencement. They have over 80 students entering 12 different fields of work, so it's, it's a great thing to have that resource in this community. On May 23rd, the Youth Apprenticeship Breakfast will be held honoring businesses and students that take part in that wonderful program. On May 24th, we have our Annual Teacher Retirement Dinner and thanking those educators for their careers helping young people. On May 26th, Charles Fernandez School will hold its graduation honoring their students for their determination to succeed. On May 27th, the Life School students are graduating, will have their ceremony honoring their efforts. And on May 29th, Sunday, we have SPASH commencement. So we have lots of wonderful things happening. What a great month. Just want to say another quick thing about teachers and teacher appreciation. You know, I know many of you read articles and you, you see things about the teacher profession these days. Things have changed a lot since we all were in school regarding teachers and how our society views teachers. So I just want to leave you with this thought that whatever any of us can do to help elevate the teaching profession, I think, needs to be done nowadays. Somehow, it has been turned around in our society. And I was telling a story to somebody today. I had a, I, I was, I had a chance to hire a, a young teacher in Florida who had just come from Japan where he was teaching English over there. And in his class, he said that when a student was absent, if the parent could, the parent came to the class because it meant so much not to have that student miss things. So, you know, things are a little bit different. Also, when a teacher walks into a classroom overseas in many of the countries, the, the students stand up. So the respect that there is for the teaching profession in, in the world is, I think, much greater than what has happened in our country. It'd be nice if it turned around. Also want to recognize one of our teachers, Art Greco, for having that Portage County K-9 Unit fundraiser. I know Dan was there and down at the Lower Whiting Park last, last weekend. Great job. They raised a lot of money and I think Art has to shave his head. I don't know if he's... I, I don't know if that's official yet, but he was, he raised 5,000 bucks. That was the deal. So I think we can all, all have a, have a fun time with that. And finally, I want to recognize Dr. Keel Aronson. You know, we also, we had Greg Neen, Dr. Neen, well, almost to be. He's, I think, working on the final. But Greg, you know, is superintendent at Wapackinow and Keel just announced that he's going to be superintendent in Baroqua. So this is the second administrator from this district to become a superintendent. So I think what it says to me and what it should say to the people in this community is the amount of qualified and really highly dedicated people that we have in our administration in this school system, that this cabinet, and they're sitting out there. And I don't say enough thank you to these people, but I can tell you that they've made this year very easy for me because I pretty much let them go and do what they do and just kind of facilitate it. And if there's a question or two, I try to help it along and not hinder them because they're the ones that really drive everything. So I want to recognize Keel for his achievement superintendent in Baroqua. So Keel and Greg will be leaving us and we'll be doing some replacement things. So we'll be interviewing for Greg's job soon. Great people here.
So, and just to underline for board members, last year, I had the great fortune to attend the Youth Apprenticeship Breakfast, the Annual Teacher Retirement Dinner, and the three graduations. And all five of them were unique, educational, heartwarming, just wonderful, wonderful events. And so I encourage all of you, you know, to, I know people have, have...
Lives.
Lives and jobs, et cetera, but to the extent that you can get to, to some or all of these events, please do. The fact that you're there is recognized, but you also, you'll just get so much of, I just got a so much deeper understanding of the spirit of so much that underlies, just the excitement of the preparation and the recognition and the enjoyment. So anyway, I encourage everybody to, to feel that you're invited and to attend when you can. And I know Sue sent out kind of a list of all the dates and it's, it's a daunting list at the end of May, but again, to the extent you can attend, we'd love to have you be there. Okay, we're moving on to item A, which is a Consent Agenda. And that includes, A, the minutes from the April 11th, 2016, regular April meeting, B, the minutes from April 25th, 2016, special April meeting, and C, approval of the schedule of monthly bills. Could I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay. Okay, a motion by Jeff, a second by Sam. Any discussion or questions? Could you call the roll soon?
Mr. Kontos?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Item 9A, one is the Business Services Committee Chair Report. Amy Daly.
I believe, and in my discussion, Tom, we're going to use the same format that searches and I'll just give a little introduction for each item.
Okay, great. So we'll move into item, I always got to flip back, 9A2, which is Remodel SPASH à la carte and Dishwashing Rooms.
So in your packet, there's a lot of information regards to our à la carte program. Currently, the à la carte room is one of the smaller rooms and not a convenient location for the number of students it serves. And our dishwashing room, where the students put in their trays, is not a convenient room or an efficient room for our staff. So the proposed item is to switch the two rooms, making the dishwashing room the new à la carte room and the à la carte room the new dishwashing room, making a new flow for the à la carte room because more and more students are going to get à la carte goods every day. And then it would also eliminate staff needing to move trays across the hall and through student traffic and food through students' traffic and they can prepare everything in the new room.
So, so are you going to be...
Sure.
Making a motion to move and remodel the à la carte room and the dishroom?
I think it's a great idea. Our students are loving it and every year for the graphs that are provided, more and more kids are using the à la carte option. So with that, I move to approve the remodeling of the à la carte and dishwashing rooms at SPASH for this proposal and payment for the remodeling to come from the Food Service Fund.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
By Chris, any discussion or questions? Well, my son gra, my son graduated from SPASH last year and he had breakfast there every morning from the à la carte room and got in line. And, you know, we were able to see at Business Services, I was at the meeting, the, the bottleneck with the students that are moving back and forth up and down that hallway, as well as the kids that are trying to stand in line to get into the à la carte room, which is this teeny, tiny little room. And all you have to do is take a look at it. And frankly, the logistics, I think that the à la carte room currently backs up to the kitchen and the dishwashing room is across the hallway, so you have to cross the hallway to get into the actual kitchen from the dishwashing room. It just, it makes sense. I do want to note that this, this is, will be paid from the Food Service Fund. It will be fully paid over a period of years out of that fund. It will not come through our general levy dollars, et cetera, our general fund. So did you...
That was, that was my comment. I just wanted to make that clear that...
Okay.
Where the money was coming from.
Okay. All right. Any further questions or discussion? All right. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kontos?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Lori Epstein, the, the boss of that area is here tonight. Did you want to add anything or...
This would be great for the kids. They're so excited.
Yeah, well, thank you for all the initiatives you guys are bringing forward. I mean, but for that, we wouldn't have the reason to do this. So, all right.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, we are moving on to 9A3, which is Status of Hoover House Action.
On this item, you've seen it in front of you before. It was at our last meeting or the meeting for and sent back, it would be the April 11th, so not everybody would have seen it. It was sent back to committee for further discussion and review. Dr. Owens provided options and pros and cons for each of those options and our committee reviewed them and felt that it was still in the district's best interest to move forward to use the Plover Fire Department to reduce the house and fill it in and reconstruct the site. The big determining factor in not wanting to sell out the property or lease it out for that timeframe is the concern of whether buying it back, we would need to pay what the current value is for that piece of land. We, we know where it is. It's right there in a big growing area of Plover and in 10 years, the value of that land could be quite a bit more. And even if we didn't want to put a school there, it was a good piece of land that we could use for a trade or some value that it could benefit our district in the future. So with that, I move to use the Plover Fire Department to reduce the house and have administration see to the restoration of the site.
Second.
Second. Any discussion or questions? First, Dan and then Sam. Dan?
Just to ask, the, the requirements for fire departments to use homes for, for training have skyrocketed in the last 10 years. Plover has agreed to take this on and...
Yep, there's, per Dr. Owens, there's no asbestos in the house and that was their requirement. Was there anything else or was it just the asbestos?
They said they were interested in doing it. I don't interpret that as an absolute. We have to negotiate with them and talk to them and see how everything would work out. So if it, if it works out well, fine. If it doesn't, we'll have to come back to you folks and determine what you'd like to do if that's your choice.
Sam?
It still seems to me a little bit ridiculous to burn down something that may have some value, specifically since it's structurally sound. I would like to see if there's anybody who would, who would buy it and be willing to buy it and move the house rather than destroy it. That would serve the same purpose if we still had the land and we wouldn't have the house there.
Did we take a, I guess as an administration, do any looking into that option?
Mr. Keck, did you get any answer back from a mover if...
No, I did not. They called me back today, but I was unavailable.
Okay.
So I didn't get the, I didn't get to speak. I called them back and we were explaining.
Okay. I mean, just looking at the house and with my limited experience with houses that I've seen being moved, I mean, that house would have to be sliced apart. It's an L-shaped house and I think, I think that in itself would mean quite a substantial amount of money because you're moving two pieces down the road, but if you want to talk to it.
The message that I got back from them, you know, the bid would all depend on, or quote, would depend on distance. I mean, how far do you want to move the house? Yeah, so I, she didn't call me back after I left the last message, so.
Dan, can you speak to, because clearly there are probably some items of value within that property. I guess what we'll be, be doing with respect to salvaging, reuse of any of this, you know, if we, if we're going down this road of...
Sure. I would talk to the Plover Fire Department first, if they are really interested in, in burning it down, whether they would want the windows in the house. The furnace is virtually new. We would definitely take that out. Water heater's new. There's some other small pieces there. But the house is, right now is gutted, I mean, because we had all the damage and I kept trying to get it to bare bones where it would be good. And after we found the structural problems, that's when I said, you know, this isn't going where we wanted it to go. So bring it to you guys.
Any other board members with any questions?
Not really a question, but listening to the number of discussions that we've had about the house, I, I really don't want us to have a house that we're having to deal with if we don't have to. The land is ours, it's valuable, but I think it's a lot of time and work that could be used in other areas if we look at a lot of the things that need to be done in our district. I don't, I don't think we should be a real estate provider for a house. I, I would like to take the things that are of value out of that house, but I, I really would agree to talking to the Plover Police or Fire Department and if they're willing to do that, you know, find out what, exactly what the details are, but I would really support that.
I also want to note from my perspective, especially the location of that house and the way it backs into the green circle. I mean, it's a whole, it's a wooded area and frankly, moving into the summer months, I, I just get a little bit more nervous about the fact that we've got a building sitting there that's, that's been gutted and whether we're going to have some people trying to visit that house and maybe enjoying some summer evenings. I mean, just, it just makes me nervous. Again, it's a kind of a secluded, even though it's right on Hoover, it's a very secluded, very inviting piece of property for...
True, absolutely.
Summer do's.
Teenagers.
Yeah.
Some of us old people, the winter...
So now, now that I've made that known, I guess I'm, I guess we could be in trouble. You guys are going to have to like get a guard out there right now, but I just think for that to, it's just an attractive, it's just an attractive...
It is very securely locked for those people that do want to visit.
That's right, Sam. It's very securely locked.
With guards.
All right. Any further...
If the Plover Fire Department ends up not wanting to burn it, is it going to come back to the void? Is this what we're going to do?
It'll have to, yes.
Yes. There's a decision tree that Dr. Owens made and I, I almost wanted to show this to the people at home because I've, I've never seen it called a decision tree, but it's really quite a nice flow chart. But yeah, if, if they don't want to do it, then yeah, we'll, we'll get it back.
We'll have to bid the dismantling of it, and we'll have to prove that. Okay. Sue, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
It passes nine zero.
Thank you. Moving on to nine, the man, nine-
Eight four.
Eight four, which is cost and time-saving suggestion regarding Board Packet.
So, I believe we all received the same packet and know what it's like to see the bills in paper form and how many pages that makes up. So this is really basically to save some money for our district and suspend the reprinting of the schedule of monthly bills for the Board Packet in months that there's already been a business services packet, because they will have been produced once, and it is redundant and kind of a waste of money to print the exact same information one week later. With that, I would, regarding the recommendation, I would like to change the recommendation to have it read, approve suspending the reprinting of the Schedule of Monthly Bills report in the Board Packet for months in which there's a report presented to the Business Services Committee, and have the Schedule of Monthly Bills electronically separate from the regular Board Packet. So, in the scrolling, our packet is 300 pages, and it's a lot of scrolling when you can have this separate, and that would be my thought process.
That was the motion?
Yes.
Second. I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Sam?
I had some phone calls on this, and I want to make it clear to the people that called me, because I wasn't able to answer them at the time. This doesn't mean that the public is not going to have access to these bills. There will be a folder put up with the agenda on the website, and I assume a folder next to it with the bills that'll be available to the public. So there will still be availability for the public to see them electronically, and, you know, we're not going to try and hide anything, but I can't even do it, just to save paper. We've charged the schools to save on ink costs and paper, and it's the least that we can do as a board to do the same thing.
Well, and clearly, it's all a matter of public records, so in the event anybody wants to get a copy of that, they have the ability to contact the district and do that, as would a board member. But as Amy noted, we're already going to be getting it in our committee folders, so we will have access to it in that venue. This is just taking that board venue for us reprinting away. Yes?
I support this. This is fine, and to make it a separate PDF makes a lot of sense, but has anyone talked to IT about how that's going to be displayed on our webpage?
Tom?
Tom has.
We can discuss with them. The bills are already out there for 24/7 viewing under the Business Services Packet. We can, within the packet for the Board meetings, just include a link. It doesn't have to be a separate PDF, and that's even more work. All we have to do is provide a link. I think that was your suggestion earlier, it was a very good one. And that way, anybody that wants to see the scheduled bills, they scroll to the board, they go to where it's scheduled to be, click the link, and it takes them right to it. Otherwise, if they don't want to see it, they can scroll through the Board Packet much easier. They don't have to go through 15, 16 pages of bills to get to the next item.
So friendly amendment to the motion? So-
Well, included separate. I would assume that could also be considered-
A PDF.
A PDF. Just not the entire document. I was going to make an additional comment. At our new board member orientation, we were talking about, with the other new board members, about the cost of printing paper packets, and Dan got out his calculator, and he figured it was about $125 per packet run of paper, and that was printing the 15 to 20 packets at a full Board Packet that we would normally print. Just eliminating the Schedule of Monthly Bills will cut down probably 75% of that packet, which is a good dollar savings for our district.
Excellent. Okay, Sue, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Rano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Moving into nine eight five, which is Capital and Maintenance Improvement Plan for Action.
So this item is to put out a RFP so that we can find a company or contractor or a group of them, but retain one after that RFP, who would be interested in working with us in setting long-term goals and plans as to what we need to do to keep our buildings up and running and maintained and make improvements as needed. And this is simply to put out the RFP. Without putting out the RFP, we don't know what the cost of this would be, because it would depend on the contract that the person would put together and the agreements within that contract. So there aren't dollar amounts, and there's not even an estimate as to what it would count, cost our district. However, there is the fact that we're going out for RFP, so the cost at this time is nothing to just gather more information, and that's purely what we would be approving tonight, is the information gathering. So that, I would move to direct the Business Office to distribute the attached RFP to create a multi-phased Capital and Maintenance Improvement Plan, and return to the board with a selection recommendation based upon the results of the RFP.
Do I have a second? I'll second. Second by Portson. Discussion, questions?
I think it's a great idea. I think to look at a short-term, a current and long-range plan systemic review, that's a huge process with all of the buildings, with all of the things we have going on. You need somebody from the outside who does this, who can stand back and really objectively look at what they deem our needs are, not only for now and for the short-term future, but also the long range, and put that into something. And I think we need to find out, you know, who does this, and what do they include, and what would those costs be to us? I think because the more you spend money trying to maintain things, I think you find out that if you don't do what really needs to be done early on, five years later, the costs double or triple on that. So I think it really makes a lot of sense to have somebody who's, this is their field, this is their profession. Find out, let's find out. You know, we want to make sure the dollars we're spending, we're doing them in the right order. So I think it's a great idea.
Any other board members?
I did note, at the committee meeting, I had a conversation with Dr. Gerlach, our incoming superintendent, with respect to this concept, and he was incredibly supportive of it. He thinks it would be a very, very good tool for him coming in to be able to take a look at what those needs are, you know, as he moves into the first year of his term. Also, I do want to note to the board that the Business Office indicated that part of this RFP will include all of that work that's already been done by the Business Office. It's not like there aren't a number of avenues that the district has already used with respect to it. We have ongoing maintenance plans that have short-term, mid-term, long-term. We did just take a look at a roof report a few months back, highlighting a bunch of issues with our roofs. We have the Consolidated Task Force Report that came forward with a number of recommendations, and that was based on four other task forces that had put together information. So all of that information will actually be available to those contractors who are going to be bidding on the RFP, as well as available to the successful bidder in the event we do choose to move forward down this path. So we're not going to be reinventing the wheel. There's a lot of wonderful work that's already been done by administration staff here in the district, but it's going to be that ability to take that broad perspective and really be able to update all of those tools based on what's happening right now in our district with enrollment and with identified needs, building by building. So, Sam?
A few of the schools did have some papers in there that showed the different things they needed. I want to make sure that we get and make available to whoever does this, the papers that were given out during the school tours, because Jeff and I were the only one who went to SPAS, and there's a lot of stuff on there and a lot of costs on there that had nothing to do with realignment. It had to do with just getting things ready. And so we need to have that available to the people so they know what we're talking about, they're looking at it.
They'll get it all.
I think a lot of those items that were listed on here included some of that, that were not necessarily related to the realignment.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion? Sue, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kanto's?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Rano?
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Okay, we're moving on to nine eight six, which is White Paper on District Demographics, and this is an information-only item. We'll have Tom come up to the podium.
Hurry up, Tom.
Yeah, five minutes.
Okay. And the pointer works. Hi.
Hi.
I've created and amended, abbreviated, I should say, White Paper presentation this evening, looking at the highlights of some of the key points that have occurred in the document. Lee, could I get you to click on this? I want to be-
Sure, I can click on it. We have Dr. Case is here, too. Here's the tech person.
The device doesn't want to move forward by itself?
Sure.
And it also is not showing me the... It's just not on the screen. It didn't come up on the screen also. It worked before the meeting, but there you have it.
The brain is here.
Had to do the Alt F6 or whatever it is.
Yeah. That's the one.
There you go. I have to click it with either the mouse or the pad itself. We need to go to the next slide, so. Have to hit Enter or the... There you go. Okay. This data shows the makeup of our school district. The Table A is a list of the municipalities that comprise our district. We have 18 altogether, in a combination of cities, village, and several towns or portions thereof, and it's quite extensive. Table B lists the top 20 school districts in the state with respect to equalized value as of 2015, and you see Stevens Point at the bottom, but that makes us the 20th-largest school district in Wisconsin with respect to size by equalized value. If you looked at enrollment, in 2014, we were rated 21st on enrollment, so we're right around 20. In Wisconsin terms, that's a fairly, we're a fairly large school district. In California terms, no, or New York, but in Wisconsin, yes. So, on the next slide, this is our membership history. Thank you. Got it working? Okay. Appreciate it. Going back several years, and what's interesting in this particular situation, it started out in 1990, 91, right in here, and we moved down through a slope of declining enrollment until we hit right around 1997, right around here, 96, 97, started up again, and we've held our own for all of these years in here. We've stayed pretty much in between, a few years, maybe 7,400 to 7,500 students between these lines, right along there, for nine years now. It's been pretty stable. We are not inclining. In the last few years, we continued to decline. We are seeing a decline in enrollment. We do have a trend starting, we've had three years of declining numbers. Not huge numbers, but still nonetheless declining. But what's important is to see this time span here, because when I show you some other slides, you're going to see how this fits together with terms of the economy and how it's affected us and other districts around us. And we fared fairly well in keeping a stable enrollment, really, even though it's slightly declining. But it does tell us something different than back here in 2011, when we were first looking at the first facility study. We were coming off a period where we have an incline here, and it was kind of stable up here. There was a little bit of drop here, and then it was coming back up again, and we didn't know what the angle would be. Would it continue to go up slightly, or what? Well, time has shown us now, since then, that, no, it kind of stayed somewhat stable and maybe with a slight decline. In this particular graph, we're looking at enrollment. These bars are the enrollment, that period we've been looking at, and this shows economically-advantaged families or students and disadvantaged. And you can see that right around 2011, 12, we started seeing a precipitous rise in the number of economically disadvantaged students as a part of our overall enrollment. And this will have greater meaning when you look at this slide. This shows five districts in our area. This is DC Everest, this is Wausau, Stevens Point, Wisconsin Rapids, and, or Wisconsin Rapids over here, and I believe that says Marshfield there. Now, these are enrollments. The orange bars show enrollments, so you can see it's fairly flat here. I believe this is when Everest introduced the 4K program, so they had a little jump in their enrollments there. This district in here, this was, which district is that? I can't quite see.
Marshfield.
Marshfield, thank you. Couldn't read it from here. Marshfield in here, and then Stevens Point and-
That's Wausau.
Then, what you see here is, in the green, would be the free and reduced. Now, Marshfield and Everest started about 10% lower than we did. They were about 19% and 20% respectively, right here, when they started out in about 2011, and we started up around 29%. You can see the growth that has occurred. In all cases, we saw some continuous inclines here going up throughout these years, in the last eight years. We have significant increases in the number of free and reduced students, and that correlated with the other graph you saw of economically disadvantaged. Now, what happened about two years ago, a year or two ago, two of the districts started to see a decline, a slight turn. Maybe in their local economy, they may have seen a little change starting to take place, potentially. And if you see in some of these other districts that is occurring, too, this Wausau is dipping down just a little bit here. We hadn't made the turn yet. We're still kind of plateauing a little bit, but it's a slight upturn. And this is Wisconsin Rapids, and they're just jumping up. What's kind of interesting about Wisconsin Rapids, you can see the enrollments here are somewhat flat. A little dip here, but not too much, but in Wisconsin Rapids, it's constantly going down. And as a result, also, at the same time, the number of free and reduced is going up. So that would seem to indicate that their enrollments are dropping, people are moving and leaving, looking for jobs possibly, and those remaining behind, either by choice or by economic situations, are remaining behind, are facing greater economic challenges in their district. So when you see here, a steep decline downwards and then an increase in economic challenges here, so they've got their hands full there. This shows the various elementary schools comprise our district, and each one of these bars represents a year going backwards from about 19, excuse me, 2015 back to 2007. You can see the different jumps in the different years due to enrollment and the grades, et cetera, and these flat bars are the average class size for those particular schools. When you break out data at this level, it gets a smaller sample size, so you see greater variance, and you'll see where, maybe you'll have a grade come in here, and there'll be a low point here, and then the next grade will be up high, and you just see that type of variance. It evens out when you pull them all together and increase your sample size, they fill in for one another. This is an example of secondary level. Really, Charles Fernaz's too small a sample size to really get any valid data out of it, but here you see the junior highs and their average. If the sixth or seventh grade coming in is about this size, the average won't change. If it comes in about the size of these two classes, you're going to see an increase in- If it comes in about the size of these two classes, you're going to see an increase in average class size. The same is true over here with this particular school. If the enrollments of the incoming students is equal to the one leaving, you won't see a change, but obviously, if it drops down here, we'll see a drop in that. And the senior highs is up fairly level in what they've been doing over the years. Now, this is when you take all the composite data, you roll all of those enrollments together, and you look at it from kindergarten... Whoops, excuse me, I meant... You look at it from kindergarten through 12th grade, and you see your average class size up here. You can then see you don't have quite as much of volatile swing, although you do get one here around in 6th grade. But what's interesting here is, look at the average class size of all of these students, and then compare these years here. These are your kids in secondary school right now. So the question's going to be, this kindergarten class and the ones that follow it, as these folks move out to the right and others move in, what size, what numbers will they be? That's the $24,000 question. And if they come in at the size of the current kindergarten, you're going to start to see the enrollments probably turn up again if they continue that path. If they don't, this is a big spike. When it drops out, this bar's going to come down just a notch. These are under that bar, so the kids coming from this direction, you know, they're not going to bring the numbers up unless the economy turns around such that we have more movement, there are more job opportunities, families come into the community, et cetera. So if the economy picks up, this could all change down in here, too. Because every child that's going to come into our kindergarten class has already been born five years ago, four years ago, three years ago, two years ago, et cetera. We just don't know from where they're going to come. They could come from other communities, other states, and all of that. Yes, sir?
Have you looked at those numbers, that 1 to 5 in the community today?
We look typically the ones that we concentrate on, the four-year-old kindergartens, and we do look at those numbers. It's pointless to look at birth numbers, et cetera, and the local hospitals, because people are born here that aren't even residents, and the mobility is such that they move all around.
But do you know approximately what percentage of that... You know what I'm saying?
I do not.
Okay.
No, I don't.
So where's 4, right now, the four-year-old population? Is anticipated to come into the school system?
The 4K right now, I think, is around 486. I think that was the number. I can't remember exactly, and don't quote me on that, but somewhere around in there. I was working on that today. I believe it was in that area. So, yes, ma'am?
When you go from 4K to kindergarten, I mean, there's a certain number of kids that simply don't go to 4K.
That's correct.
Does that number jump?
Well, what you have is a situation where there are kids going to 4K that don't come to this school either. So, it's not an absolute. There are a lot of options, because there are private schools, the choices that they have, and some children, after they leave the 4K program, when they start kindergarten, they'll go into a private school environment, and some come into the public school environment. Some children aren't in a 4K program, and we don't have visibility on them, and then they come at kindergarten and come in, too. So, not every child is in 4K. And then, you know, when you have a population mobility of about 25% or so, if people are moving, coming around, you never know what you're going to get. Once they come into the system, though, it tends to be a little more predictable, but there still is a lot of movement. Yes, ma'am?
Remembering in past years, I think towards the end of the year, it does seem to be that 480, but by the time, it seems like it always increases by the time school starts, almost that 500. I know we increased a couple.
Yes.
Three of those years, we really increased more than they thought they would. Now, I don't know with the vouchers and that, if that'll change, but...
Well, at this point, probably not by much. I was working a cohort survival ratio model today with a regression analysis on it, and I think we were running at about 7%. So when we were coming 4th grade, 4K to kindergarten, it was an increase of about 7% above the 4K numbers. But the problem with projections, and I'll tell you that right up front, they're only a calculation projecting to the future of what's happened in the past.
So, I hate to do this. We have a packed agenda tonight. So I really think we need an overview tonight, and if there's some of these areas that we want to dive into deeper, you know, go out and pull data from the community, I think we should look to do that more in depth in upcoming meetings. So tonight is just kind of a, let's get an overview of what's happening, and then board members, you know, we want you to get in touch with Dr. Bush or myself. If you want business services, just, you know, look in closer at one of these.
Good thing I left all those other 42 slides in.
Yeah, and I'm a little nervous, yeah.
No, it's almost done. This is into the ethnicity of the district. I cut out all of the slides dealing with each individual building, grade levels, et cetera. This is just a roll-up of the district, comparing 2007 here to 2014 or '15. And the blue represents the Asian populations remain fairly stable in our district. The green represents Hispanic, which is increasing slightly. And this is, I believe it's a new category that started in this particular school you're back here, because I didn't find it in any of the data prior to that. And that's where you have two or more ethnicities, a person identifies them as being multicultural or multiracial, rather, and that is increasing as well. But when you roll it all together, if you extend this line across, there's a slight increase, but not dramatic. We are about, in the last several years, we've been maintaining about an 18%, I mean, a, yeah, 18% minority population in the district. It's been pretty stable, et cetera. So, for what, that's worth it. This one's interesting here, too. This is the open enrollment model, and this shows the number of open enrolls... In, rather, the roll-out, and then this is the average of the two. So you can see we've had more open rolling out, and that's pulling the average, obviously, downward. The difference between that, too, as you see in one of your memos today, is about $200,000 we're losing by having more students leave our district and come in. So that's something we have to continue to look at. This is a histogram showing the elementary schools. Most of our staff, our teaching staff falls between the 20... 10 to 30-year range in here, which is a good distribution, and these are all starting teachers going of one year, two years, three years, four years, and five years, et cetera. This is a secondary level. Again, you can see new teachers coming on board, and then five to 10 years, and then 10 to 30 years, we get most of our staff falls in that, which is quite typical of school district. And this graph shows the tax rate, and this is very interesting, too, because the district has remained between $8 and $10,000 for 18 years. This was a period when we were going through a lot of increases in negotiations back in the year, back in the day. This is 1993, right there, '94 school year, when they introduced revenue limits, QEO, and they tried to get a handle on this and bring it down, and it did bring it down. And then, when we hit at this point here, back in about 19... Let's see, I can't remember the year there that was.
1998, maybe.
18 years ago, anyway. 97, that's what it was, 1997, right in here. And we've been playing fairly flat right in there, between $8 and $10. Some years it may go up a little bit, and then we may have a little bit low, but it's stayed. I think that shows that the district and the boards have been good stewards of the taxpayer money over those years for that time. And this shows the mill rate in comparison, again, with those other four school districts that we talked about. And you can see the mill rates going up in these other districts, that'd be Everest and Marshfield is going up. This is Wausau here, and then Wisconsin Rapids. And remember, the enrollment was going the other direction, but the mill rates are going up there, so that's kind of interesting. And then we're right here, which kind of plop up and down. Our average is probably right in here, so all the others are showing some pretty sizable increases. We've stayed flat, which is consistent with that previous slide that you saw. So, we're almost done. These are some of the things that needed to be addressed regardless of grade realignment that were identified in the previous studies. I'm not going to read any of them or go into it, but it includes... This includes data from our 10-year maintenance plan and the roof schedule things, et cetera. And these things are not all-inclusive. We discover new items that come up as we go along, and that happens. And so, then we get to a slide where if grade realignment is the decision down the road, should that happen, then these are some unique things. The one thing I would interject, the data kind of shows that the way enrollment is right now, we are not under the same perceived pressure that we were when the original study, grade realignment was done, and facility study was done, where we didn't know if it was going to increase, stay flat, or decrease. Now we see it's kind of going sliding down, so the board actually has quite a bit more time to work with this issue, should that be their decision to do that. These are the items needed if you do grade realignment. So in summary, there are a number of things that the board can be involved in with respect to these last two items of looking at facilities. And it's a district, it's a fairly large district, and we've seen a number of increases in free and reduced lunch in the district and the economy, but as the economy picks up, we may see that correct itself. Neighboring districts have been struggling with this, along with us, but in some cases, more so than we've had to struggle with it. And open enrollment continues to be an issue, and we have to address that as time goes on. The data suggests that the district will continue to see open enrollment out, open enrollment in. I don't know at this point how much more will happen with respect to vouchers, programs, and this type of things, but we'll have to be vigilant and watch what happens. And the district is comprised of...
Teaching staff.
But experience... I can't read that.
Teaching staff is extremely distributed.
I'm going to have to enlarge... I know, that's right. I almost forgot. You know what I can do? I can enlarge that. So, the teaching staff is well-placed at this particular time in terms of its size and distribution, and there is an appropriate number of staff in the 10 to 20-year range for our staffing. Over the 18 years, the district has maintained a stable range, and other factors are presented in the future that could cause a greater fluctuation, but we'll have to wait to see that. And the other ones, I won't read that in the interest of time, because it's basically the same points as we've covered, so... The end.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome. Yep. I'm going to have to make a larger print.
So a good introductory look, especially for new board members, of kind of some of those trends that we're seeing, at least the state is reporting on that and bringing it forward. Thanks, Tom, for bringing that forward to us. So we will move on to Item 8B, Educational Services. And 8B1 is the Educational Services Committee Chair Report. Trish Baker.
Most of the things that we talked about in the meeting, we're going to be introducing 1 through 4 different items, so I'll just... The only thing I really want to talk about is we did a world languages update, and I want Dave to step in if I say something wrong, if I understand. I think I got everything right here. We had three of the language teachers from SPAS speak to us, Jennifer White, Deb Stafford, and Chloe Autumn, I think I got that right. And they talked about a major change in curriculum and how we deal with world languages, German, French, and Spanish, and talked about the fact that they don't do quite so much more speaking and less rote drills, as I notes say. So, it was very interesting, and they said that they've pretty much revamped the curriculum with regards to languages at SPAS. And then that has worked its way downward into the junior highs as well. So, that was very interesting to learn about the fact that the way that they teach language is been updated, and they gave a great deal of credit to some consultants that the teacher or that the district has hired and to come and work with some of our teachers. So, it was very interesting. They applauded the efforts of these two women that came in as consultants, really applauded their efforts, and how they are teaching the students how to speak rather than just understanding and memorizing verbs and so forth. So that was the highlight, as far as the presentation that they gave. The next item, if I can just... Can I just kind of introduce these?
Sure. If you want to call them out, just so they know...
Sure. So that was number one, just kind of a general report. Then, the mental health service expansion, the Bridges Program. Do you want to speak to that, or do you want me to just give an introduction?
It's up to you.
So, the Northwest Passage organization that the district has worked with for some time is now expanding, and they're expanding... We've used their services for a variety of students with pretty severe mental health issues that need to be in a more restrictive environment, and correct me where I get things wrong, okay? But we are expanding into the 10 to 12 grade areas. And this comes about because of the Ministry Healthcare Gala for Giving, which raised $133,000 and gave it to us, or are giving it to us, for use in mental health care. So the idea here is to actually put a teacher at Northwest Passages, we're calling it Northwest Bridges, actually put a teacher there and use that $133,000 to pay for the teacher at the program, so that the students that are at Northwest Passages, or Northwest Bridges now, will be... The instructors that are there will be providing... They'll be providing educational services, curriculum services, in addition to mental health services. So, what am I missing?
Just a couple points of clarification. We've had our Bridges Program in place for several years now. We've been serving our K through 9 population, and we have been able to reallocate out of our current staffing model, half of an FTE to round out our full K through 12 grade levels. The Gala for Giving gift is actually going to be applying the $133,000 for clinical psychologist or psychiatric oversight that will be coupled with the CCS funds, which are Comprehensive Community Services Funds. These are federal flow-through dollars, and so the district is collaborating really on a three- or four-pronged approach here. There's... The district, obviously, has some stake in the game. Northwest Journey is a full collaborative partner with us. Portage County Health and Human Services is supporting us, or this program, with the CCS funds, and then the Ministry Gala for Giving gift. And so all of those resources are coming together now to support students who are in mental health need, grades kindergarten through 12. However, the multidisciplinary staffing piece, which is the real unique part of this program, will begin at grade 7 through 12 for the upcoming year. And then, after we have established the program and the protocol, then we will look to expand that in the future to include grades kindergarten through 12. But that, the only nuance there is that that $133,000 will be spread out over time to support a very high-level, skilled, mental health provider that will provide that case management oversight and bring to the table all of the providers in a child's life.
So, from a district perspective, what we are asking of the board is to approve the reallocation of an existing .5 FTE to serve 10 through 12 through the Bridges Program. So that's what the motion is for us. And then, the ministry funds that have been raised are going to augment and support...
Correct.
...that programming that's occurring. So, it's a revenue-neutral request, expansion of mental health, direct mental health support to our 10th through 12th graders, who are deemed to... to our 10th through 12th graders who are deemed to need that higher level of support. I just want to note, this is an issue statewide. There are no additional funds coming from the state to support the significantly increased mental health needs of many of our students, and it is something that districts are seeing and being incredibly vocal about at Madison, because it is, it's stress on all levels for our schools, on staff, on finances, on the students, on their families, on the community. And as was pointed out earlier this evening, our administration should be incredibly proud of the proactive approach that has been taken. I mean, in the short period that I've been on this board, the leaps and bounds that you have all made to cobble together with existing funds, additional supports for these families and their students and our staff is very laudatory. So anyway, this is, this is the next piece of the puzzle that they're bringing forward to us, and I'm wholly supportive of it.
So I would make that motion, what you just said.
Did you have that, Sue?
I did.
To approve the allocation of the .5 FTE to expand the Bridges Program to 10 through 12 graders. Is there a second to that motion? Judy, any discussion, questions?
I have one question. That $133,000 you're gonna, you're gonna set in reserve and then spread that out. How many years do you anticipate that's going to be able to last to get us that case management that you need?
Yeah, that's a great question. That question was also raised at the Ed Services Committee. Our initial projections are two years, dependent upon the level of oversight that the student population requires. However, I would add that within the first year of implementation, we really need to get our partners in the business office involved and get a per-child cost for the expense of this program. Because if we want to create a self-sustaining program, the opportunity to sell slots or places to our neighboring school districts is significant, and that is certainly part of the long-term vision for sustaining this.
Okay, so while the, the level of service for each child is dependent on their needs, about how many children do we anticipate supporting with this next year?
Yeah. So we anticipate an additional six students, probably right off the bat, in grades 10 through 12. And we usually average about six to 10, 12 students for K6 through 9th grade.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Sue, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kontos?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Ranno?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Okay, so 9B3, the State Testing Opt-Out Parent Requests.
This is actually pretty simple. We, as you can see in the outline, in the memo, there's a variety of tests that the district requires, and parents can actually opt out if they so choose. They can have to do it as outlined in here. We've had eight parents write to the district and ask that their students, that their children not be required to take these tests. And so we, as a district, have to approve those eight. So I would make the motion to recommend approval of the written parent request to exercise their choice to opt out their student from the state testing program.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. Any discussion or questions?
And if there are any, Dave can answer them, but it's pretty straightforward.
I think we're ready to have Sue call the roll.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kontos?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Ranno?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker? Yes. Passes 9-0. And then lastly, for my part of this, number four, the Reading Specialist Instructional Leader position. So since I've been on the board, we've approved a couple of different instructional leader positions. And what these positions are is essentially, they oversee a variety of teachers that are specialists in a particular area, and this is for reading. And so, and if Dave wants to pipe in and add anything to this, what this would be is a cost-neutral position, but it would be to create an instructional leader position as a specialist in reading that would provide a $5,000 stipend to that particular individual, and there's a job description that's been attached. It's cost-neutral, it comes from federal dollars, and quite frankly, my feeling is is that as a district, when it comes in particular to elementary school student, elementary school students, there's nothing that we do that is more important than teach students how to read, that that's the very basis for all additional learning thereafter. So I'm supporting this and would make the motion to recommend approval of a $5,000 stipend to fund a reading specialist teacher leader position.
Second. Any discussion or questions? So again, to note, the position will be funded through federal Title I resources from the professional development area, which is appropriate because this teacher will be working to coordinate and support those reading specialists throughout the district, and it will not impact the general district budget. Any questions or comments? Sue, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kontos?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Ranno?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Okay, we are on 9B5, which is Open Enrollment Application Approval Action. This came in, was not a committee, but is here in front of the board. Is there anyone that wants to just speak to this? Greg, you want to speak to this? Just give us a little background on it.
Sure. So this year, our open enrollment policy changed significantly with the change in state statute. The new policy shifted the onus of responsibility away from the business office and into the Student Services Office due to the connection to enrollment. By and large, the most significant change to the statute and thus to the policy was in the area of special education open enrollment, and thus the shift away from business office to Student Services, as I mentioned. So what I've done here in the memo is really followed Tom's format from the past. I'm giving you the number of students who are open enrolling in, those who are opening out, and then your net result there. It's important to keep in mind that these numbers are just that, they're just numbers at this time. Students can open enroll into as many as, or they can submit applications, rather, into as many as three districts per student. Obviously, that doesn't mean that they're going to be able to attend all three districts, they ultimately choose one. Many times, although they fill out an open enrollment application, they end up staying in their home district. So at this time, this is really just a projection, which, as Tom said earlier, is, you know, a numbers lie. So it's our best guess at this time. But I think the nice thing in the numbers is that you do see a downward trend in the number of students open enrolling out. And so hopefully, with our innovative programming and offerings, PODs, our one-to-one initiatives, and the other great things we have going on in the district, we'll begin to see an uptick in the number of open enrollment in.
Can I have a motion to approve open enrollment applications for the 2016-17 school year pending their acceptance or rejection by the Director of Student Services?
Go moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Daley, second by Scott. Any discussion or questions? Sue, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kontos?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Ranno?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Okay, we'll move on to item 9E, which is Human Resources, and one is Human Resources Committee Report. Judy Rannau.
So we had a fairly quick meeting, and we touched on all of these things that we'll be going over, so I will just hit them one at a time.
Okay.
So the first one is Recommendation for Employment. So you can see the revised notice that is sent at your tables for the changes in employment. So I will make a motion to approve the personnel recommendations as presented.
Second. Any discussion or questions? Sam?
I'd like to get some more information about the reduction of contracts under 5...
We can't talk about specific individuals at the board meeting.
Then when can we?
Well...
I'd just like to know why one person is getting a .7 reduction.
But that should have, well, it, again, I guess I'm going to note for the board that if board members have questions with respect to specific individuals, it is appropriate to contact the superintendent, because we are in a position where if we're, we have to be very careful about talking about specific individuals in an open session, especially within the context that are being raised. So it's not something, it's not something that we can, we can ask our Director of Human Services to come up and give us whys, because that individual has the ability to have that information within a closed session atmosphere, if that's what they want.
That's the point.
So, so you can't do it in an open...
I did send letters, and I did ask, and I got nothing back.
Well, that, then, and...
That's fine, go on.
Are there any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll ask Sue to call the roll.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Ranno?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kontos?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
No.
Passes eight, yes, one, no.
Thank you.
All right. The next one we talked about was an Assistive Technology Specialist position, and this is kind of exciting. We have a lot of different devices and technologies available, and so we actually had a conversation about how many we had and the need for somebody to manage that. And I would actually ask Brian or somebody, Greg, whoever wants to, please, because we asked to bring some information to you as a group, so.
Sure. So what you have in front of you is an Assistive Technology Specialist Position Description and a corresponding memo that hopefully provides you with a rationale for the new position. Assistive technology comes in many shapes, sizes, and forms. It can be anything from a pencil grasp to a ruler that you can look through, to an iPad, to a GoTalk, to a very highly specialized wheelchair for a student who is otherwise non-ambulatory. What we've been doing in the last nine years in the district is kind of cobbling together the supports that we can, year by year. And so over the last several years, Brian's department has had a few dollars that they have contributed. We've pulled together some grant dollars, and we have had an individual work a couple of days a week and kind of chase his tail around the district and try to provide what support he could to the students and staff based on those limited hours. As we have infused the Technology Integration Specialist into the district, Brian and I, especially around December when the tech needs assessment was conducted, you may recall one of the areas of need there that was identified in that needs assessment was the need for kind of a special education go-to person in the form of a Technology Integration Specialist. But in special education, the language in the Code of Federal Regulations and IDEA is reference to assistive technology. So we moved away from the TIS label, and we went more towards an ATS label, although there's going to be a real direct parallel between the two positions. This position will work, obviously, with the Special Education Supervisor and the Director of Student Services, but will be housed out of the Support Services Staff Building, and will meet weekly, monthly, quarterly with Brian and his team. So what this position will do largely is not only provide support to students who have assistive technology written into their IEPs, but also provide a very much-needed and highly skilled level of professional development to our special education staff who are looking to use technology as a, as a means not only of efficiency for delivering instruction, but also to enhance instruction for our students with disabilities. So that's kind of the 10,000-foot view of the ATS position. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. It is important, of course, to know that this is a budget-neutral impact overall. We had a reduction in force in other areas of special education, so reallocating those dollars and also diverting some federal grant dollars to make this new position completely budget-neutral. So we believe that this position is really going to be a boon for the students, families, and staff in the district.
So I guess I need a motion on the floor to approve the Assistive Technology Specialist position as presented. Some of, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Scott, second by Rannau. Any discussion or questions about the position?
Let me give you a really tough question.
Okay.
Because I gave you no preparation. If you had to guess, how many students do you think would be helped by having this position?
Um...
I know that they'll be doing more than ju, I mean, they're going to be doing a lot of different things there, but...
Yeah, yeah.
Or even without the position in it, how many students do you think utilize all of these different things that we have?
Well, you know, I gave you some numbers in the memo about the number of devices that are out there, and those are just the big-ticket items.
Right.
Your tablets, your laptops, your iPads, that sort of thing. But I think when you get into things like visual schedules or the students who utilize Boardmaker, you know, I think you're probably talking at least three-quarters of your special education population, which is all of 750 students across the district. So I think that, and I'm not sure that this is where you're going with the question, but I think that there's definitely going to be more work than just one person will be able to manage. But I think it's a great start, and it's easily, you know, twice the resource that we've had in the past.
Sure, and that's where I was going, so, thanks.
Any other discussion or questions by the board? Once again, I guess I just want to applaud our staff for being proactive about figuring out where the new needs are. I mean, the needs that are being developed in the community and working with the existing dollars that we have available to create better programming for some of the neediest students and families in the district. Could you call the roll, Sue?
Sure. Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Ms. Ranno?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Erler?
Yes.
Mr. Kontos?
Yes.
Passes 9-0.
Thank you. Moving on to 9E4, oh, I'm sorry, Judy, the Security Health Plan Partnership Wellness Program update.
So this was information only, and you can see from the summary in the report that the renewal information for 2016-17 resulted in a premium increase of .8 percent. So you can see down below some of those numbers with the partnership, without the partnership. And if you want additional questions, we will call for it, so. So that was information, so.
Any questions or comments by board members?
Let me just make a quick comment. I really appreciate the fact that we have this available to our staff, but it wouldn't be of any benefit if we didn't have the numbers that we have of staff who participate in this. Yes, it helps the district, and yes, it helps our staff, but as a board member who was... I really appreciate the fact that we have this available to our staff, but it wouldn't be of any benefit if we didn't have the numbers that we have of staff who participate in this. Yes, it helps the district, and yes, it helps our staff, but as a board member who was really, saw this in the beginning, I knew that some of it was really a leap of faith that they would come forward and be able to get, you know, accept this. So I am truly appreciative of those staff and the numbers we've had, which really benefits both the staff and the district. All right. So the next thing we talked about...
I just, I want to, I want to note, just because the, you know, again, the premium increase without the partnership would have been a 4.2 percent. The premium increase with the partnership is a .8 percent. We all know what that means in terms of increased cost to the district to, for health insurance. The percent savings is a 3.4 percent. That translates to $446,668 in savings, and it's attributable to the fact that our staff steps up, as Chris said. We had 92.6 percent of eligible employees came forward and took the steps that they needed to take to make this partnership work. And human resources also, the human resources department, was very involved in making sure that happened as well. So again, a thank you to them, and any way we can save money, you know, just helps us be able to provide, to balance our budget, frankly. So, anyway, I agree. All right, go ahead. Sorry.
No, that's okay. That's great.
It's just amazing. I mean, 92.6 percent, it's just, it's amazing.
So the next thing we talked about were the base wage increases for non-represented employees, and I'm actually going to ask Florence to come up and give any background or answer any questions about this. Is that all right? All right. So what we're doing is recommending the .77 base wage increase for 2015-16 and a .12 increase for 2016-17. And if there's clarification or why the .77 and all of a sudden a .12, can you explain that?
Did you need a motion on the floor?
Yeah, why don't we put a motion on first?
Then I make a motion to do that, to approve the .77 base wage increase for 15-16 and .12 increase for 16-17, as outlined above.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Scott.
Okay.
Okay. With the .77 percent increase for this current year, 2015-16, that has been the amount that the board has approved to be offered to the unions. You'll also see later tonight, we've reached impasse with AFSCME, so that is the amount that will be implemented with that group. We're still in discussions with S P A E A, but we have submitted our final offer to them, but no response, firm response as of yet. We are still in discussions, though, and so therefore, since .77 percent has been the amount that's been approved by the board, that is why administration is also recommending that that amount be approved for the non-represented staff, as directed by the board as well. The .12 percent for the 16-17 school year is because that is the maximum amount that is allowed by the Wisconsin Employee Relations Commission. Per the statute, once the W E R C sets that amount, the board or any institution that's involved with the statute cannot offer more than what the W E R C has approved, and that will be the .12 percent.
Thank you. Florence, not to put you in the spot, but what was CPI for 15-16?
1.64, 1.62 or 1.64, I don't remember exactly.
And I want to just note that, because we do have a .77 percent out there, that is a decision that the board reached after taking a look at the financial position of the district and determining what we believed was economically feasible. So that 2015-2016, the .77 percent is less than half a CPI. The 2016-2017, it's at CPI, which is a .12, which is, well, enough said about a .12 percent increase. So are there any other questions or comments by board members with respect to this? And this would be non-represented employee groups, including administrators, our at-will employees, our clerical, our educational assistants, food service, and support services. Okay, I would ask you to call the roll.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Mr. Cantos.
Yes.
Mr. Levin.
Yes.
Ms. Portson.
Yes.
Ms. Rannow.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
All right. The next thing we talked about was the R F P for the life, the long-term disability, short-term disability insurance. So there were two different companies, M3 Standard Insurance Proposal Rates and National Life Insurance Proposal Rates. And then, if you have any questions, again, I'll ask Florence. There's quite a bit of detail in here, and looking at the analysis and all of that, comparing the two, the committee, when we talked about this, we make a motion, move to recommend the board award the contract to National Insurance Services, and so I'll...
Is that your motion?
I'll make a motion, and then we'll continue.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
Yeah, so we had some discussion about this, because we have two companies we've received R F Ps for, and if you look at the cost, we're recommending National Insurance Services, and that is slightly higher than the other company, but the reason for that recommendation is the ease of transition, moving from one company to another. And if you could explain a little bit about that, that would be wonderful.
Thank you. National Insurance Services took over the book of business from W E A Trust, and so when W E A Trust notified us that they would be discontinuing their participation in the long-term disability and short-term disability programs, they were actually going to just transition us to National Insurance Services, but in our due diligence, we felt it was best. We're dealing with public funds, so we wanted to go out for an R F P to see what else was out there before we just automatically went with National Insurance Services. And as Judy said, we did have the discussion, even though National Insurance Services is slightly higher, we just think it's important. Staff has been through a lot of changes the last couple of years, and we want to make the transition as smooth as possible for them, and National Insurance Services is simply just taking over that book of business, and W E A is simply transferring it over to them.
Board members have any questions? So the difference in cost is $5,100 on a total cost of over $300,000. I just want to be clear for anybody who's watching that that's that differential, and staff is recommending, administration recommending that in terms of that smooth transition, ease of service delivery, both beneficial to our human resources department as well as to all of the staff who are covered by these programs. Any discussion or questions?
I think it's important to note that a contributing factor is the one that we chose is going to, is going to match the services we had prior, and that goes a long way for the place.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I will have Sue call the roll.
Ms. Daly.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Mr. Cantos.
Yes.
Mr. Levin.
Yes.
Ms. Portson.
Yes.
Ms. Rannow.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
Okay. Then we have item nine E seven, which is Recommendation to Implement Base Wage Increase for the 2015-2016 District AFSCME Collective Bargaining Agreement. Do I have a motion?
Well, I move to, hang on. Yeah, I move to impose the base wage increase for the .77 percent as written for, so it's... For the AFSCME.
So to implement the, your motion is Stevensburg Area Public School District Board of Education, implement its last offer of .77 percent base wage increase to AFSCME for the 2015-2016 contract year.
Thank you. Yes.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, second by Scott. Any discussion? Sam.
I'm just going to impose on AFSCME. It doesn't make sense to me. We've got another group out there that hasn't made a decision yet, and it seems that they're working together on this. Maybe we'd be better in holding off on imposing it until we have our next meeting with these groups, and maybe we can come to an agreement with them. I mean, we're not going to go up, we know that. It's going to be, we know what it's going to be, and they know what it's going to be. But since one group hasn't, if we're willing to wait on them, why aren't we willing to wait on the other?
I think it's, from my perspective, I think it's important. I mean, we need to bargain separately with these unions.
We do, but we aren't.
We cannot, we cannot have any ties with respect to bargaining. We are at the position of impasse with respect to this union, and so we, as a board, have the legal ability to do so.
And Ms. Earler is exactly right. With AFSCME, we've reached impasse, where both sides have agreed that we are now at impasse, and we have not gotten to agreement that we're at impasse with S P A E A.
The, I guess the other practical benefit is, again, these are still back contracts, and so the sooner we're able to settle them, the sooner human resources is able to work to get that back pay that is due and owing to those employees into their pockets. Any other questions or comments? Sue, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
Mr. Cantos.
Yes.
Mr. Levin.
Yes.
Ms. Portson.
Yes.
Ms. Rannow.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Daly.
Yes.
Passes nine zero.
All right. And nine E eight, 2016-2017 Teacher Contract Renewals, that is here for information. Florence, do you want to just speak to this?
Correct. The contracts will be renewed for the 2016-17 school year. You do have the list of the teachers with their F T E status and the amount of their contracts currently that they have for the 2016-17, according to the statute. If the board takes no action to non-renew, which you've already done that with others due to R I Fs, they will just automatically roll over.
Any questions for Florence? Okay, thank you. Moving on to, we did not have a policy committee meeting. We will move on to nine G, General. One, School Board, End of Your Staff Appreciation, Possible Formation of a Subcommittee. I put this on last year. Our board had a bit of a celebration for staff that actually occurred during Teacher Appreciation Week. I would like the board to entertain creating a subcommittee of a couple board members who might be willing to sit down and pull together a plan of celebration for all of our staff for appreciation for all that they've done in this past school year. Initially, last year, we kind of, it was kind of cobbled together, and the bottom line is that it does require, it will require definitely, or my senses will be looking to expend some of the dollars that we have in our board fund budget, and so this is really a board decision. But if we want to keep a little surprise element to it, if we create a subcommittee and they are able, we give them the authority to be able to run with this and create something that they think would be fun and nice for the staff, we can accomplish both things. So that's, that's what it is right now. I guess I'd be looking to, we don't want to get to a quorum tipping point, but if there were a couple board members that wanted to help me kind of pull something together, and then all I can tell you is, all the board members will be asked to help to the extent that you can in light of what your current job responsibilities are as we move to implement it. So I guess, and I don't even have to be part of it. I mean, if there's three people that want to do it and not me be part of it, that's fine, too. I just think it would be a, it's been a great school year, people have worked really hard, and it would be nice for us to be able to recognize them as a board. So I have...
People to contact you?
Well, no, I think we'll, we would just, I guess that's why I had it on for action tonight. I think if we could, you know, get a few people, and we'll create that subcommittee, and then we'll let them run with it. So are there any volunteers?
I'd be happy to.
Okay, Sam, Barb...
I will.
And Trish. Okay, so I'm happy to be out of it. We could have the three of you, if that's all right with board members. So I guess, do I have a motion to appoint that subcommittee?
I think according to policies, any subcommittees that are appointed by the board, that the president can appoint themselves, if I remember correctly.
He may be right.
Whether I can, whether I can or not, I guess I'd like to, I'd like it better if we do it as board action.
Just do unanimous consent.
Do a unanimous consent for Barb, Trish, and Sam to help pull something together?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Dan, did you have a?
Yeah, just because it's not registering in my brain quite yet, I just want to assure us, ourselves, that the three members that are going to be on the committee are not, are not a quorum of any of the committees that we have.
No, well, they would not be a quorum of the board, and as long as they're not a quorum of the board...
No, it would, it would include the committees of the board as well.
It's not, because...
But it's not.
There's those two, and then they're on separate nights.
Yeah, they're on separate committees.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay, so I guess approval by affirmation, all those in favor of the subcommittee formation with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Okay, we're moving into ten, which is Board Meetings. Our next regular board meeting is at 6:30 PM, June 13, 2016. I will note that we have an upcoming retreat coming on May 19th, and will, were you able to secure the Windsor?
Yes.
Okay, so, and it will be located at the Windsor in their clubhouse. We'll get the details out to board members very quickly. It's on the calendar, Sam. Oh, it's on the calendar, okay. All right. Yeah, Dan.
And again, I don't mean to be a stick in the mud. This retreat, since it's not a social event, will be noticed as a...